I'm Mike Cahill and welcome to another edition of Hatfield Currents. This is a kind of a special show. The goal of this show is to kind of recap what's transpired in the annual town meeting, which was completed last week, and also the results of this year's town elections. And so I've asked Ed Lesko, the Chair of our Board of Selectmen, to join us today. And what Ed and I are going to do is just kind of go through the agenda of those two events, the town meeting and the election ballot, if you will. And we're just going to have Ed come in on, you know, kind of the results of those events and perhaps the implications of those for the community. So Ed, welcome to Hatfield Currents. It's good to have you with us and that you could take time out of your busy schedule to share with us some of your feedback and thoughts on town meeting and election. So what I'm going to do is kind of use the warrant, the town meeting warrant, at least some of the key articles from that warrant, as an agenda for our discussion. So just more or less, that would be the outline for what Ed and I will talk about this morning. The goal here is to keep the community informed as to what transpired and what some of the implications are and what we might be looking forward to as a community in fiscal 2013. So Ed, let's start off with-
First of all, Mike, thank you for inviting me and hopefully I can answer all your questions. And if you have any from last year, you know, to follow up, I don't know if you want to incorporate that also, but hopefully I can answer all your questions today.
Okay.
Well, I'll let you proceed.
Yeah. Let's first talk about one of the early articles on the town warrant for the annual town meeting is actually a voting article. It kind of sets the parameters for voting and establishes which of the positions are up for reelection and when that voting would take place. Obviously, that doesn't take place at the annual town meeting. It takes place by ballot on Election Day. But, you know, the Election Day is over. There were a number of open positions, but not very many were contested. I think there were, there was an assessor's position that was contested and two school committee positions that were contested by, I guess there were three candidates.
There was one contested and then there was an open position.
Right, right. So any thoughts, any comments? Again, as I guess as a resident at this point, but not necessarily representative of the Board of Selectmen in terms of their, you know, the board's response, but this is your personal response on the results of the election.
Well, I'm not quite sure what you're asking here, Mike. If you would just want input on the two positions. I mean, there's other positions, like you said, that nobody ran for. What we hope is a board that to get more people involved in the community and fill some of these positions. As you know, as you may know, or if not, the Board of Selectmen can fill any unfilled position. We can appoint to that position if it's left blank. And like, I know one for the redevelopment authority. I think there's two positions there.
There were two, right.
We can appoint throughout the year if somebody is interested. Certainly contact our town administrator. We have a new town administrator, Paul Boudreau. And give them your name and we'll put you on the agenda and talk with you. And that way we can appoint to these positions. The two, I'm just glad that we did have people running for various positions.
Running, right. The democratic process is working, at least for several openings.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. So what are the, just going back, what are the positions that were open and for which there were no candidates?
Well, I remember the redevelopment authority was-
There were two redevelopment authority positions.
Two on the redevelopment authority.
Hampshire Council of Governments was, I think, another, as I remember the ballot.
They had a bunch of write-in candidates on that one.
Okay.
So I haven't talked with Louise yet to see who actually was appointed to that. I know Jeff Boyle made mention about that and some of the people wrote his name in.
Okay.
And he would do very well as far as being representative for the council of government. So those are the ones that just come to mind.
Okay. All right. So if anyone's interested, at least in the redevelopment authority openings, contact the Board of Selectmen and indicate your interest. There were several other questions on the ballot. There were several of them were override questions.
Sure.
Debt exclusion questions. So let's talk about these because these are fairly significant in terms of dollar amounts. Not the least of which, and probably the most important of which, was the question as to whether the town should authorize the Selectmen to go out and proceed with a $2.4 million-
Yes.
-bond issue for the water main.
Water, water transmission line.
Right.
That was a very, very important article for the whole town. As everyone probably been aware of, we, in the last few years, we've been talking about the water transmission line. Last year, we had the, we got the money through town meeting for a final design, okay, to get that done. And that's why we can move forward so rapidly on it this year. Okay? Because part, all the legwork was done as far as all the engineering and, or the design phase coming off the reservoir and laying out the path where it was going to go down Chestnut Street. But I was very happy to see this pass. I know it's a lot of money, but it's also a lot of headaches. If the transmission line, which is existing, does fail, then it puts the town in a real predicament. I know Whately, years ago, their water failed and they had to shuffle water in. You had to go and get water, bottled water. You had to go to the National Guard area where they had water. And that's how you, that's how you had to live, okay?
Yeah.
And they, I think they went on for a couple of months that way.
Right.
So we didn't want to get into that situation here. And so that's why we pushed to get this thing through. And I was glad the voters did see that because it does, it does affect the whole town and not just any portion of the community.
Right. So as a debt exclusion article or question on the ballot, this prevailed, which means that whatever the cost of that will be in terms of debt amortization over the next 20 years will actually be added to the tax rate over and above the proposition two and a half limit.
Yeah, I believe it's around $120. I didn't bring the figures with me, but it's around $119 or something like that, based on a $300,000 home. So that would be an increase.
I was thinking the other day, after the voting, of the people, the residents of town who 100 or more years ago actually decided to run that main, the original main, from the reservoir down to the center of town. And I don't know how many homes there were, how many taxpayers there were, if you will, at that point in time. But the cost on a relative basis must have been hugely more significant in terms of a burden on them than it is to the average taxpayer today of this $113. Granted, it's not for a main coming all the way to the center of town, but nevertheless, it's still, it's still, you know, it's $113.
Yeah. If it did come to the, into the center of town, it would have been around, I think it was around $4 million, $5 million to come into the center of town. What we decided to do was go to the area that was most vulnerable to where a failure could be. So coming-
And the most difficult to repair.
Yeah. We took it out of the swamp lands and the rivers and stuff. We took it out of that area or we're replacing it on drier land and different type of pipe system and coming up through. So we'll eliminate that process for failure in those areas.
Yeah. So in terms of impact on those original residents, when they end up having to put that line in, it must have been incredibly important for them and incredibly costly on a relative basis. I'm sure that they spent a lot of money on, per resident basis to bring in that line originally. So it's the least we can do when people start thinking about $2.4 million and $113 in their tax rate. It's probably a minor issue compared to what they faced years ago.
Now, there's quite a few lines in town, just to touch base a little bit on the water lines and sewer lines. The water lines, there's some that are over, way over 100 years old. And these areas are noted. We have documentation now as to where they are. And little at a time, we'll be replacing them over years. But right now, we want to get through this period because this is a big chunk of money and we don't anticipate any other monies within the next couple of years that we-
Right. And this is the main feeder line. So this is certainly the most significant and the most material of all of them. So let's move to another question, Ed. An item that didn't pass in terms of election was the reconstruction of the sidewalks.
Main Street sidewalks and North Street. Yeah. Okay. That was a little, I figured that would pass because various situations with what's happened in the past. There have been quite a few people that have gotten hurt on the sidewalk there. I've walked the sidewalk. I don't use it every day. I know there's people that use it every day. I know of three people that have actually fallen because the roots coming up into the sidewalk. It's, the sidewalk there has never been replaced, like the one in the center of town where the kids walk and stuff. That's been replaced twice already.
Right, right.
So looking at that part of the sidewalk, we felt that it was our duty to bring it forward. And in this case, it was a debt exclusion. It hit, more than likely will come back next year, not as a debt exclusion, but we'll try to fit that in as part of our budget process somehow. That's something we have to take a look at and how we come back. And, because it definitely has to be fixed. We certainly don't want any lawsuits and current lawsuits. And especially, we're familiar with what's going on over there and the condition of it.
Right.
Okay? So we have to be mindful of that and see how we-
There's no question that that's a safety issue there.
Yeah, exactly.
A potential, potential litigious, I guess, situation if someone were to get hurt.
Especially when it gets towards the dusk area, evening area.
Yeah.
It gets really dangerous.
Yeah. Years ago, we would, we would take as a potential funding source for that, Chapter 90 money. Is there any prospect of looking at that as a potential funding for projects like that going forward, Ed?
We have talked about using Chapter 90 funds, but in this, the past couple of years, we've used them specifically on upgrading our roads.
Sure.
Okay? So, but that is a possibility. That's something that we need to look at.
Yeah, yeah. One of the other questions on the ballot was some money for a tanker truck, a new or used tanker truck, I believe.
Yes.
Correct. It's not new, it's used, that the fire department would like to have in that past, which was, which was good.
Yes. And that tanker truck, it's, from what I understand, the other one is, I think it was a 78 or something like that, 76, 78. And they just wanted to bring it up, to bring it in, get a new one, not a new one, but a used one, because the joints were leaking, that the connections were leaking. They keep repairing them one right after another. It's like they repair one thing and the next thing breaks. So, and so Bill's looking, the fire chief's looking to see if we can get a good used one. I know when we went into Unibid, I went in there in the very early stages, and there was two of them that were somewhere around $10,000 to $20,000 down in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And so that's where Bill's looking at to see if somebody else is maybe going to give up theirs and stuff. But we lost out. They went right away for that price.
I can imagine for that price, yeah.
Yeah, so-
Something I didn't realize.
So those are the kind of things we're looking at.
And I think Bill shared this at, I can't remember where I saw this, either, it was either a town meeting or it was in the paper, that given some of the water pressure in certain areas of town, Ed talked a little bit before about the aging infrastructure of the water pipes in the community, some areas particularly. They need to have this tanker truck because they need to add, they need that water in that truck for, to pressurize that area while they're fighting a fire.
Well, not so much as that, Mike, where it's used more so for brush fires.
And brush fires.
We can transport. What they do is if there's an area that is lower on water, they can set up these portable tanks, okay? They're portable canvas bags, big bags. And the tankers will go down and fill up out of a stream, back up, and then they have what's called a quick dump on the back of it. And it dumps the whole load within a matter of minutes.
Yeah.
And so they can fill the whole baskets right up and then go get more water. So it's like water shuttling. And that's for up in the mountain areas where there's not much water pressure and there's no, there's no water lines up there.
Right.
So you have to shuffle the water. And if you have a forest fire, works that same situation. And then if you have a house fire, a house fire or something like that, that's not on the water line, like I say, up in the mountain area, that doesn't have the water line.
Right. You need to have that, that water, portable water.
So it's a valuable tool, it's a valuable tool for the fire department. No question about it.
The two articles or two questions that were on the ballot, it was also articles on town meeting, were, dealt with the ability of the Board of Selectmen to appoint going forward, to appoint the town's town clerk and the town clerk and the town treasurer. And those were defeated at the election.
Yes.
So you guys recommended that going forward. It would have been the first time ever, I guess, that the town would have had the ability to appoint as opposed to elect. Comments, thoughts on that?
Well, it's basically, we could have gone either way, but we wanted to give the voters a choice.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? We felt that those were two very important positions for the town and the townspeople needed to let us know what they, they want, we wanted to hear from them, see what they stated and what they wanted to do here.
Yeah.
Okay? We felt on our end that with those type of positions, we might, we might be able to get better qualified people, but who knows? I mean, we went into the same situation years ago with the tax collector and we got Marie Chmera and she doing a wonderful job, okay? So we didn't, we didn't change that position. The town maintained that, they wanted to maintain the, their position as far as voting the people into those positions. So hopefully this will work out the same way and we'll move forward and continue on.
Now, the state has actually suggested not only the potential to appoint the town clerk and the town treasurer and a tax collector potentially, but also the assessors. Do you ever see that opportunity, if you will, being put forth before the community? That's the only one, I guess, that the community hasn't had an opportunity to pass judgment on it.
I suppose in the future, yes, there's always room to bring that stuff back up and so on. But the townspeople want to maintain control. They, the drift that I got at this town meeting was the Selectmen, they want to, not the Selectmen, the townspeople want to control the way the town runs, not the way the Board of Selectmen wants it to run.
Right.
Okay? So that's the message that I got.
They want government to be in the hands of the people and not in the hands of government.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Because when you, when you start leaning towards the other way and putting it all on the Selectmen, then you're getting into a MERRILL situation, okay? And once you have a MERRILL system, then it's a whole different ballgame.
Right.
It's the way the game is played and then you lose your say and so on. So, and Hatfield's a small town and the people speak. And when, when they speak, you have to listen.
Let's talk about some of the articles that weren't on the ballot but were voted at town meeting that dealt with the improvements for Town Hall.
Yes.
There were a number of articles that dealt with that. And one dealt with the entryways at Town Hall. There were others that dealt with the, I guess, an elevator system for the Town Hall. And there may have been another one that dealt with, I can't remember.
Sure, I'll try to take one at a time there.
Yeah.
The entranceway, since we're putting on a new handicap ramp, as you remember, the voters voted last year. We're very close to putting it out for bid. We're getting a design. The architectural firm that was doing the design of it was really dragging their feet. And so we've been on them to get it out there. And they finally finished it and it's supposed to, we're supposed to review it this coming week and get it out for bid. So once that-
Excuse me, Ed, will that, will that design be publicized at all or available for?
It's basically the same design as what was proposed when we were going to do the four or five million dollar renovation project.
Yeah, okay. So it's the front, the ramp will be in the front of the building?
Absolutely. It's the same type of, well, it's the same, we're using the same design.
Okay.
Okay? The steps will be brought forward a little bit. The ramp will go behind it. You won't be able to see the ramp. It'll be buried in the whole facade of the building. When you look at it, it'll look like what the building is there right now.
Yeah.
So it'll be, it'll look, it'll look very good. Look very good. And the entranceway, like I say, the stairs will still be rounded and they'll come up to the entranceway. And then the entranceway itself, once we do that, there's some concrete and concrete blocks that are, that have to be removed and leveled up where the ramp comes in. And the columns that are around the Town Hall right now, the wooden columns, they're rotted on the bottom. They need repairs and stuff like that. So we're going to be taking those down and have them reconditioned. And so when the ramp's all done, those will be able to put back into place and do the whole entranceways. We'll get as many as we can done. I'm pretty sure we can get them all done around the whole building because everything that's painted and so on will be re-scraped and the lead paint removed and then repainted. So that's, that's on the entranceway and then-
Will anything be done to the internal entryway area or it's just, it's just external?
Well, it was external at this point, but we, if we have enough money, we need to look at, be like a vestibule area to stop the cold air from coming in.
Right.
So where the two offices, where right now the town clerk's office is and the secretary's office, we would be looking at putting in some, putting in a petition, a glass petition. So it would serve as a-
As a buffer, as a cushion for insulated area, if you will, yeah, for cold air.
And then the elevator, which was passed, some of the money was coming from Community Preservation Act, okay? Quite a bit of it was coming from there.
Yeah.
And that will be placed. And we already had an engineer come in or an architect come in and look at it. And we found the suitable place for it.
Where will that be, Ed?
That'll be right in the hallway. It'll start off in the basement area. Right now, the police chief's office door, going to his office, that's the location of the elevator. And then when it goes up to the second floor, or the first floor, I should say, it will be in the corner of the secretary's office, okay? And there's a little janitor's closet there in the hallway. It'd be right at the bottom of the stairs that go to the second floor. And that's where the door will, the elevator will come out there. And then when it goes up to the second floor, it will come out into the hallway. If you go inside the room with the clock, okay, where the table is and it's set up, all the artifacts are in there.
Yeah.
And there's a corner that has the clock and then a dumbwaiter. What we're basically doing is following the chase of the dumbwaiter.
Okay.
Okay? And it just, it's feasible to put it right there. And that's where we're looking to put it because it fits. It fits there. So, so that's taking place as we speak and we're moving forward on that to get that done as quick as possible.
Any ideas to when all this will begin?
This, it's actually in process right now.
What, you say in process? I mean, construction is-
We're designing process.
Okay. Right. How about construction?
Construction-
People see something tangible.
My, I anticipate, I'd like to have it start by September, okay? And go from there. And we're also looking at another portion of it, we're looking at doing the electrical work. And that's, that's in the process. What we need to do is, is change the electrical panel boxes coming in and upgrade all that, the electrical and the electrical room, the mechanical room. So that's a, that's a big project electric-wise. And we also have to set the Town Hall up for emergency generation system, okay, if the lights go out. I know when, when we had the power failure, we had the generator hooked up, temporary generator hooked up, and there was no heat in the building because the heat wasn't connected to the generator. So there's things that we need to reassess the whole picture here and figure out how it's going to be set up and so on. So, so that's another portion of that. And then whatever money's left from there, what we need to do is we need to put in a couple of offices and a meeting room upstairs, okay? And what I mean by that is in the gymnasium, there'll be a couple of offices that go in there. I think it's going to be three offices if we can do it within the money and a meeting room. And then the TV studio will also be placed in there, okay?
What, you're speaking of the offices, which offices would they be? Would you be moving people from the basement up into that area or these new offices?
No. The basement area is a tough area to work in right now because of the, it just must, not musty, but it's, well, it is musty and damp.
Yeah, it can be.
So Bill Belden, he's down there now, he's going to be moving over by the fire department along with-
Fire chief, right.
With the police chief, okay? So those two rooms will open up, but Bill's will be used for storage, okay, which we need. File storage and that kind of thing. And then Tom's room will be used for like a mechanical room. And the door to his will actually go where the ladies' room is. There'll be a hallway put into door that goes into his room now. And the ladies' room will have a new door put in there. So, so that, basically what's going in there now. And once we put the, the meeting room in, then the DPW's office and the town administrator's office, we need to replace those. So two offices will go each, for each one of those.
Okay. So that area, that current area will be, that's going to be the meeting room space and then those two offices therefore are going to be displaced and you're going to put them out where the current, the old gymnasium-
Yes.
...space, okay?
And then the, then the meeting room will be, it's a quite large meeting, meeting room. It'll hold, it should hold about 125 people.
Right.
And, and that will be on the south side of the gymnasium. And we're duplicating the plan that we had done a couple of years ago and submitted it for approval for the, for the original plan.
Right.
Okay? So we're working off of that just to, because that's something that we won't be, we wouldn't have to replace it if they ever in the future wanted to put a second floor on. We're only doing what is going to stay and not be taken apart. So we're not going to waste any money there, so.
Right.
So that's basically what's going on with the Town Hall.
So over the course of the next 12 months, we're going to see a lot of activity in the Town Hall.
We'll see a lot of activity in the Town Hall, that's correct.
And how about, how about, do you see this impacting business as usual in the Town Hall at all? And people are going to have to, I suspect, work their way around, make their way around some construction at times.
Only, only the elevator.
Yeah.
Okay? The elevator is going to be the critical one because it takes, takes hold in that area with the secretary. But we can, we can put a buffer in there, put up a plywood wall to divert it and stuff like that.
Now, let's talk about the new, I guess, the room. I don't know if it's a studio for Channel 15. We're obviously sitting in the Channel 15 studio in Smith Academy right now. You mentioned that there would be an equivalent or something like this in the Town Hall. That's part of the expansion plan or the use of that area. Do you guys see that, replacing this studio or is that in addition to this studio? What's the purpose?
I'm not quite sure how much this one will be used, okay? Because the studio in here also supports the gymnasium and so on and so forth.
Right.
So I can see both those studios. And as long as we don't have to bring equipment back and forth, that's the idea. Because the minute you start bringing equipment back and forth, it gets damaged and it, you know, it takes a lot of time to set up. So these meeting rooms would be, or this meeting room would be set up with a, with a complete studio in it.
Right.
And the monies from coming, that are going to be used to support that studio would be the cable TV contract that we're dealing with right now.
Right.
And that money is put in there to supply all the equipment and so on, so.
Right. So the furnishing, excuse me, the furnishing of that room would come from the Channel 15 budget, which is coming from income from, it's our agreement with Comcast, the actual construction of that area will come from the community.
That's correct.
Or from-
Well, the actual construction, there's not a lot of construction that's going to go on in there, okay? It's just one big open room.
Right.
And the only construction part will happen is a window will be placed in so they can see through and see what's happening out into the, into the room.
The studio area, right.
Okay, yeah. So that's the only construction that'll happen in that studio. The rest is all equipment.
Yeah. One of the other things that we voted at Town Meeting were some, some changes and modifications One of the other things that we voted at, at town meeting were some, some changes and modifications to the, the new town garage building, I guess. And talk to us about that. You know, about $250,000 is going into renovating or, or I guess adding more, modifying the rehabilitation of that building.
What has happened is when the, the old town barn fell down, the insurance company paid to have a new one put up. And as you see, that's the results of the insurance. They paid for almost the whole thing. And I think we paid around $10,000 worth, but that was all for additional monies. But the insurance put up the whole building and then what we looked at was how to, well, when the milkman school was torn down, naturally the fire department didn't have a place to train. Meeting room was gone. So we had to look at where we could put that. And so we came up with the floor plan of getting the fire department and offices for Bill in, in the, that building with the ambulance. So we incorporated the ambulance, the fire and the, and the police all in that one area. And, and that's where the 250,000 came in or 200, whatever it was, came into play. Yeah. We don't anticipate using that much. It was a, a guess that, you know, the architect came up with and so on, so. But when we, when we looked at the whole picture, it'll be hopefully considerably less.
Right. So the, so the facility as it stands right now, which was basically that reconstruction was paid for primarily by insurance. Is that, is that basically now a shell, so to speak? And now we're gonna be able to go in there and, and do these modifications internally?
Yes. There's, there's walls that are put up inside there, the garage walls, where we're gonna be parking the vehicles. That's all petitioned off. That's gonna stay the way it is.
Right.
The other areas are not petitioned off. There's gonna be some bathrooms that are, it's already plumbed because that's all part of the, the money that was done before. So what we're looking at is just putting in petitions that, that are gonna support the offices and areas for working.
Now, I, I do remember at town meeting, there were plans, schematics and things that were handed out for a lot of these articles. And is it possible at all for those plans, if people wanna take a peek at them, to be up on the website somewhere?
They're, I don't know if they're on a website, but they certainly can be put up on a website. Right now, they're accessible through the DPW director's office. I know he's got a plan right outside his door that shows some of the stuff. So some of the plans are already placed around the town hall that people can, can go and look at. But I can make a note-
Town of Hatfield, out of Oregon, you know, I, I thought about that at town meeting, that a lot of those handouts, at least the plans for some of the, the reconstruction that's taking place. There was also a plan for the hiking trail as well, where that's going to be. I'm wondering if some of that could be put up on the website and then people could access the website and see what that's all about visually.
And that's part of our new administrator's job, you know, he'll, he'll take care of that, so.
Okay, remind me at the end, if I don't, I wanna ask you about Paul and maybe you can give us a little bit of background on a new administrator. Okay, along, I guess, with the renovations to the internal portion of the town hall, we're also gonna repave and restore the parking lot, which seems to make sense.
That needs it really bad. There's a lot of holes and it keeps getting potholes in there. And the water forms and people have tripped out there a number of times. And so it definitely has to be done.
Yeah.
Has to be done, so.
One of the articles that did not pass at town meeting was a $350,000 article to re-line the sewer mains in Colonial Acres.
Yes. That's, that's a touchy subject with the residents over there. The, what, what happens is we have to put a report to DEP every year and they wanna know how we're gonna get rid of some of this groundwater. So it's a requirement that we put this report out. And in the report, it shows where the groundwater's coming in. And we have to make a justified offer and, or justified-
Offer a solution or-
Eliminate some of this problem because, you know, you don't wanna be processing the groundwater. So as part of the condition-
Through the sewer treatment plant.
Right. As part of the condition, we put forward the article to line it. Because the major problem over there is our problem. It's not the, it's not the, the homeowner's problem. The water is going into the sewer line, okay?
Right. It's infiltrating the sewer line.
Right. And what I just learned this past week is-
How's it infiltrating? There are actually cracks and seams that aren't-
Actually, I just learned this past week, as we were talking about this and getting really into it, that when they put the line in, the original line years ago, they didn't put these rubber collars in, okay? To make it seal tight, okay? What their thought was is to put this sewer line in and leave those rubber collars out so the groundwater could go into the pipe and take the groundwater away through the sewer pipe, okay? So it makes sense to lower the groundwater, but that doesn't help the sewer treatment plant, okay? It was fine years ago when it was going into the river.
And the sewers, okay.
Okay, and the two were combined, but now it's, it's a whole different story. So what we had to do is we-
So what's, but there's been, the issue though in Colonial Acres over the years, hasn't it been the residents that have had problems with groundwater? In their, in their, dealing with it in their basements and things, hasn't that been an, an issue there or, or not? It's my recollection not correct?
Well, there's a couple of things that are happening here. At town meeting, you heard the gentleman talk about there's some pumps going into the sewer, okay? He said there's something like 26 people.
So that would indicate that they are having some problems with groundwater there.
First of all, it's totally illegal, okay? And there's a, there's a, there's a fine of $50 per day with everybody that's got a sump pump that goes into that system, okay? So if you're pumping water into that system, you're pumping clean water in to have water processed and that's totally illegal, okay? You can't do that.
It's not the right thing to do, right.
So there, you know, and then the other-
As opposed to pumping it to-
Out on their lawn, okay?
The little brook or something that's running in the back of the-
Absolutely, okay. Well, out in back, I've also walked that brook and, and out back, years ago, that brook used to be eight, eight feet deep to 10 feet deep. Over the years, the, the neighbors didn't want the ditch there, so they filled in the ditch, okay? They threw brush in there, they threw the, whatever else in there. And over the years, it just filled it in. So the water now, instead of going down eight feet and taking the groundwater away, it disperses it out into the area. So, so they created some, some of it's created from their own problems.
Sure.
Okay? And then the footing drains, we know that there's footing drains that are tied into our sewer, okay? So what, we, we noticed, 'cause we sent the camera through the piping system. And we know every house that's pumping water, we can see it come out of the pipe. We know who's pumping, we know who's not pumping, we know where the groundwater is moving. So, but the initial problem here is our problem, okay? It's within our piping system. And that's what we were trying to resolve, okay? Because we, we defined it, we recognized that this was a problem, we reported it to DEP that it's a problem. And the solution was to go to town meeting and get approval to do that. And that didn't happen, okay? 'Cause the people naturally stood up and tabled the article, okay? Well, once they tabled the article, you know, you can bring it up for reconsideration down the road, but-
Sure.
You know, I, I think, I'm not sure. You'd have to ask them why they tabled it.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you, do you have any ideas to why they would table something that would appear to be something that would be a, a solution that could potentially help them?
Well, that's, that's something that the townspeople would have to ask them because this, this is affecting everyone that's on the sewer, this water going in here. We're treating clean water and it's costing us a lot of money, especially when it rains. Okay, when it rains, there's thousands of gallons of water that we treat that shouldn't be going into that system. So with, with that being tabled, everybody that's on the sewer, we're paying for it.
Okay, there were some, a couple of things that dealt with the sewage treatment plant, speaking of that. And we've just kind of been alluding to the, the capacity of that plant being affected potentially by, by groundwater. But there are a couple of things that were, are, are gonna hap, be, be happening at the sewage treatment plant. Replacing the wastewater grit conveyor.
Yeah. That's the conveyor. When it comes out of the pipe, it takes the solids-
It's a $100,000 replacement.
Yeah, and it's like a conveyor belt, okay? And things gotta be sorted out and, and then, you know, if there's stuff in there that doesn't belong there, it's gotta go in one area and it's like a belt that goes up and just sorts the, the materials that come out of the pipe.
Okay.
So that, that's 20 something years old.
Is that as old as the, is that the original conveyor?
It's as old as the plant, right. It's never been replaced. So the thing that we have to watch out here is in 25 more years, they're gonna be replacing it again, okay? So you, you have to plan for that and, and maybe that's part of the, the fee schedule and stuff that we have to look at. So we have the money there the next time we don't have to ask the voters to, to pay for it.
Right.
You know, but it'll come out of the fees if that were the case.
The, probably the most, the most material and most significant article that was on the town meeting warrant was the, the budget.
Yes.
And I believe, as I recall, the budget was somewhere in excess of $8 million.
Yes.
And $8 million and some change. The budget, the operating budget was up 8% over last year.
Right.
And can you, you wanna speak to some of the major components of that and some of the major drivers behind those increases?
Yes. If, you and I talked about this before off camera, we talked a little bit about it and I gave it a lot of thought. And what has happened, my take on it, this is my take and what I feel. When we changed from a sewer enterprise fund and a water enterprise fund, okay?
We changed to it, you mean?
When we changed to it, okay? If you can picture the budget as a whole, as a pie, and then you take out a slice for water and a slice for sewer, which leaves about an $80,000, $60,000 to $80,000 hole in that budget, okay? You're under the levy limit by $60,000, okay, whatever. And that hole sat there and we replaced, the last couple of years, we got projects done with it and so on and so forth. So what happens is that eventually it gets used up and that's what happened this year. It got used up and that's where you're seeing the big difference. Over the years, okay, if that, if that enterprise fund didn't happen, okay? And the state was mandating that we go to an enterprise fund. And I kept saying that we're going it, but it's gonna benefit the state. And it sure does because the more money that the town pays, the less money the state has to give us, okay? So they, there's a method to their madness too.
Sure, sure.
Okay? So, and, and this year it finally caught up with us. And that's where you're seeing the, the big difference here, Mike.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's one of the reasons for the, for the big difference, but that-
But there were some other things that were, as we went down through the budget, that were, you know, some material increases. I mean, there were, there were some salary adjustments made in this budget.
The salary adjustments, what we did is we had a committee go through and they did a wonderful job. They, they took the old salary adjustment schedule from, that was done back 10 years ago when we, we did the wage classification. And back then, there was no money in those years to, to give anybody a, a raise. So over the years, every time a new position would open up or a position would open up and we'd have to hire somebody, you had to hire at today's rates, okay? Well, then the little person on the totem pole, okay, that hasn't gotten a raise over the years and years, were never brought up, okay?
Or has gotten minimal raises, right.
Minimal, 2%, whatever. But it's not what today's market prices are. So what we did is we took a look at this, the committee went out and did a, did their homework and did a wonderful job on that. And, and that's what we, we put together as a budget, bringing everybody up to today's rates. And, and that's where you saw the big salary increases and stuff like that. But it's actually today's dollar figures. If you went out, if we went out to hire, if we lost the, the, the police chief tomorrow, his rate is set there, we wouldn't have to be looking how we're gonna support the budget the next year or something, stuff like that.
Right. Now, there, there was, I know, at least one new additional position in the budget, as I recall. Police Department?
Oh, the police department?
Yeah.
What, we had one officer, well, actually, oh, a number, about seven, 10 years ago, seven years ago, I think. We had, we always had two full-time officers, okay? And then because of budget crunch, they cut $10,000 out of the budget back then. And, and Tom, you know, he wanted the extra help for extra police duties because of the things that are going on in town. He just felt that, you know, we wanted to, to, to take, take better care of the people in the community and, and for, for more protection. So we, we added, we agreed to add on another member.
As I recall, I think the total budget was up about $600,000 or something like that over, over last year. And we talked about some of the increases, I think, as I remember, others that were more significant and certainly things that you don't have much control over at this point. Vocational transportation and the school department's side was up about $100,000. And obviously, it's nothing you can do about that. There's a certain number of kids that are gonna go to Smith School or, or wherever they're going and you have to pay for their transportation, so.
Sure.
Sounds as though there's been an increase in the number of students that are going to Volk Ed outside of the community. And the other area was, as I remember, was, was, was just our debt burden. This is principal and interest payments that are being paid on things that we voted in the past.
Right.
So, you know, that debt burden, if you will, the total of that has increased over last year by, I don't know, it was $100,000 or something like that, as I remember. So, I mean, when you add up all of these things, as well as just, I guess, the day-to-day operating expense increases on an inflationary basis, you end up with that kind of an increase.
Sure. And, you know, the other thing that I think people should know also is getting back, not on the school budget. The school has level funded now for three years and so on. But, and, and with that, we appreciate, okay? But there's also a cost incurred by the town, 'cause the school doesn't pick up 100% of all this, okay? We have workman's comp, we have unemployment and we have insurance costs that we pay as part of the town.
Right. The town is paying those things on behalf of the school department's employees.
So the school budget may be X amount of dollars, but on the town side-
There's more.
There's paying a lot more, okay? So to get a clear, clear picture, you really need to add in the whole thing, you know, the whole, the whole picture to find out exactly what the school is running and stuff.
Right. And those numbers usually are, are taken into consideration when the school department submits its total cost per pupil analysis to the state. And, and that kinda helps drive the chapter, chapter 78, as I recall, back to the community.
Chapter 70, yeah.
Yeah. So it's, it is taken into consideration at some point from-
But there is a report, okay? You can go online and get the report that was submitted by the Town of Hatfield. And also you can come here at the school and, and get a copy of the report that was submitted. It'll show you the clear picture of 100% of what was being spent at the school here. And, and that's, that's public information, so anybody, if they want to, is, come down and, and probably see Brenda or John Robert and, and get a copy of that.
I think, you know, for people who haven't heard this or don't realize this at this point, when you look at the operating budget, increase of 600, 700,000 dollars or whatever, 8%, and you add that to the items that were voted in at election day in terms of debt exclusion and overrides. And you look at some of the other expenses that the town has to pay, and believe it or not, we actually end up having to pay some money to the state. We're looking at a total rise in the amount of money that we need to raise from taxation this coming year of 11%. So when people get their tax bills for fiscal, their fiscal 13 tax bills, they, they're gonna, before a warrant, you will see a, an 11% increase on average in your tax bill.
It's definitely gonna be, there's no question about that, definitely. The other thing I'd like to just touch base on, Mike, is the, the charter school, okay? Just wanna let you know the update on the charter school.
This is the charter school and it's the potential lease of the center school.
Lease of the center school, that's correct. And what has happened is they, they backed out of the, the agreement, okay? They felt that, and, and it was unofficial word, I don't have the official document yet, but just in conversation, that they, they couldn't know, they, they just couldn't justify spending that much money with what they have for funding and so on. So they, they were gonna have to decline, you know, to move forward on that. So we will move forward on a couple of different things.
What will the town do at this point?
We'll, we'll be looking to put an RFP back out for renting the building. And we're also looking at possibility of maybe creating housing for the elderly over there, okay? 'Cause there's state funding that might be, that could be used for that.
Available for, for that, for that kinda use.
So that's, that's our plan right now and that's where we're moving into that area. The new fire truck last year was ordered. I'm not sure where it's at. It's supposed to be delivered by this new fiscal year or shortly thereafter. It's supposed to be delivered by this new fiscal year or shortly thereafter. So hopefully, that, that'll happen, and people will see the new fire truck coming in.
Just quickly, tell us about our new town administrator.
Tom Boudreau. He came from Lanesboro, and he's had about 13 years' experience up there. He was the town administrator in Lanesboro, Mass. Lanesboro is about the same size as Hatfield.
Where's Lanesboro?
Lanesboro is up near Pitt, just north of Pittsfield.
Okay.
Okay, Dalton area.
Yeah.
Just north of Route 9, okay? And so he's been with them for years, a number of years. He's experienced all the things that Hatfield experiences here. Actually, we, we've got a few more things than Lanesboro does. And, and he, he was a great candidate. He was a runner-up from the last fellow that we had, there was three people. And the first guy didn't work out, and so.
He, he just declined the offer?
He declined the offer, right. And, and so then Paul, Paul came on board, and he accepted the offer, and so now he's on board here. He's been with us for a couple of weeks and doing a real good job, just, he, he's calm, collective, he's just a quiet guy, he just goes with the pace. And the pace is on the slower side, but he gets the job done, okay? He doesn't, I haven't seen him get riled, okay? He's just a calm, collective.
As he finished, he must be in the throes, I guess, of some sort of a orientation period for him getting to know people, getting to know all the players, meeting.
Yeah, and, and he said, when I talked with him last week, he said, people are coming in, they're introducing himself, and, you know, so he's getting to know the townspeople, the players, and, and everybody involved, and, and he's very happy with, with working for it.
Where does he live, did you say?
He's, he's up in Lanesboro.
He, he lives in Lanesboro?